I'm going to call the public hearing on ordinance 20-05, amend in chapter 244, sewer utility sections 244-2 BD, user charges. With us is Kevin Hopkins, who can give us a little picture of what we're doing and moving forward. Are you there, Kevin?
I am.
Okay. Can you just give us a little outline of what we're doing, please?
Yeah, I actually had some slides prepared, kind of walkthroughs, number of the tables in the report that we submitted earlier this month, or earlier this summer. Go ahead and advance that. So, things I want to talk about, just the existing rates, user billable quantities, what we use to come up with the new rates, income requirements, including operation and maintenance costs, replacement costs, debt service, capital improvement plan costs, and then, of course, the total income requirements for the utility. Go into a little bit of how we distribute those costs, the proposed rates, impact on users, and then comparison with other sewer utilities in Wisconsin. So these are the current rates for monthly meter charges. Most residential customers are in 5/8ths, three-quarter inch range, and they're paying $21.88 per month for their meter, plus $7.62 per thousand gallons. And then we've got surcharges for typically higher strength waste, biochemical oxygen demand, or BOD, total suspended solids, or TSS, and total phosphorus, or TP. And then there's also costs for holding tank waste, or septic waste, if that's accepted by the treatment plant. Next slide. So, in 20... Yes? Yep?
Are we currently using that holding tank at all?
I don't think so. Those prices are fairly high for septic, unless, you know, really a hauler's basically desperate, they're probably not going to use that. And, to be honest with you, with the stricter phosphorus limit you have coming up, it probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense to accept it, except on a very limited basis.
Oh, I could...
And I would stick with holding tank waste.
I'd encourage...
So, these are values from 2018, and we use these as kind of a starting point. It just breaks down the number of residential, commercial, industrial, public authority customers, the volume per customer category, and then the surcharge quantities in pounds, and then the revenues collected for 2018. So, one of the first categories for costs I listed was O&amp;M, and what we did was, we looked at the 2019 budget, inflated that for basically all the categories, and then also added some costs for engineering, and primarily that's including pilot testing that you'll start this fall, plus some engineering costs in there also. So we've got a total O&amp;M costs, or budget, of about $447,000.
Why such a huge increase on office supplies and publications? You went from 575 to 3,100. Everywhere else, it just looks like a little, and then there's a huge...
I'm not exactly sure. We did look at the... So you had a 2020 budget, a draft budget, and we looked at the 2018 and 2019 budgets. I don't know the answer to that without diving into the paperwork a little bit more. It might have been a hybrid of a couple of those years.
Kevin, Mike answered here. Might that also be under that office supplies? Might it be a computer program underneath that?
Whoa, that's...
I'll just jump in for Tammy, to answer your question. The 2019 actual is what was spent, actually spent in 2019. It's very possible that the budgeted funds are more than that, but 2019, for some reason, it wasn't determined that the fund needed to be spent in that year. So if we looked at what the 2019 budget was, it's possible it's closer to that 3,100, but it was not expended in 2019 for some reason or another.
Okay. It's just kind of a, it's kind of a big... When I look at everything else, it's a little more in line, and that's like, pretty far. So I was just curious, because I'm assuming the engineering costs are so much higher due to the fact that we're doing so much work here, right?
Yeah. Again, that reflects our estimate for the cost for the pilot testing...
Right.
Just to rent the equipment, and then also for engineering fees. We're also hoping to start design later this year on the phosphorus upgrade, so that's also reflected in that number somewhat. Next slide. So, I don't expect everybody, or anybody, to read this, but basically, it's the replacement fund allocation table. So the DNR requires any community that gets a clean water fund loan to set aside so much, so many dollars per year for equipment at the treatment plant, and it's just good practice, even if it wasn't required. So what we do is, we take all the major pieces of equipment in the plant, assign a cost to it, whether that's based on the bid cost, plus some inflation since 2008, or if we have more recent costs. We look at the service life, and then just do a, just divide the cost by the service life, to come up with allocation every year for that particular piece of equipment. Total it up, and in this case, it works out to $46,500 per year. And then the allocation is, it's done by customer, equivalent meter, which those two essentially are equated to the meter charge, and then there's a volume charge, the flow, and then BOD, solids, and phosphorus. It also, those costs are allocated to those categories also, and that's how we come up with the surcharge rates. So the next category of costs is debt service, and right now, you've got three loans, or three bonds out for the treatment plant, and I think there may be one of these, maybe a street project. But regardless, what we did was, in this case, 2021, instead of taking 2020 as the debt service, we looked at 2021, because it's the higher of any of the years, at 517,000. So the second column from the right. And then, the DNR also requires you to have a, be able to have 10% reserve for your debt service, in case there's a shortcoming in revenue that you've got enough to help pay for the loans. Next table. So then the next category is capital improvements projects, and there were two projects that were identified over the next six years. One is Ninth Avenue from Second Street to Eighth Street next year, and these costs are the sewer component of those projects. So next year, we have about $500,000 in sewer costs, sewer repair costs and replacement costs, and then in 2026, it'd be close to $1.2 million. Excuse me. So we total that up, and it's approximately $1.7 million, and divided by 10, just basically to allocate a tenth of the total cost of these two every year for 10 years, to help minimize the loan dollars that have to be, or the loan money that has to be made to finance the projects. Next slide. So then we come up with the total revenue requirements, and adding up O&amp;M, replacement, debt service, CIP sinking fund, and we have a total revenue requirement of $1.183 million. The village collects other fees, connection charges, sewer testing fees, interests, and penalties to help offset some of those costs, and we have a revenue requirement of $1.137 million. So that was basically our starting point for coming up with the revised rates. So again, we take all those costs, on the left-hand column, you've got the O&amp;M replacement, debt service, CIP sinking fund, and again, we allocate it by customer, and equivalent meter, and flow, and then the three surcharge quantities, or commodities, I should say, BOD, solids, and phosphorus. There's also a correction in there for infiltration, inflow, or II. Like most communities in the state, the village has II in the sanitary collection system, and rather than allocate all that to flow, you'd have a really, a much higher volume charge if we didn't make this correction. So it's moved more towards the customer and equivalent meter side, so we make that adjustment. Next slide. So, these are the rates that we've come up with, and for a typical residential user, the monthly charge is 27.33, which went up about 25%. Volume charge went up to 10.53 per thousand gallons, or a 38% increase. We also increased the surcharge rates, anywhere from 13% to 18%, and then the holding tank and septic rates are based on volume charge, the surcharge rates, and then I think we also add a meter charge in there. Actually, no, that's not true. It's just based on volume and the surcharge rates, and those went up quite a bit. With the septic, it's just, we topped it out at $150,000 per thousand gallons, or calculated rate was much higher than that, and that's just because of the strength of the waste is so much higher than your typical wastewater. So with that, we calculate what the rates may, or what a typical user would be, both residential, commercial, industrial, and public authority. And again, we're looking at about a 33% increase for a typical residential user, where they're using 35,050 or 60,000 gallons per year. So for a person, for a customer that's using 50,000 gallons per year, they're going from about $54 per month to $71 per month. And then, commercial, industrial users also see a similar increase. So these rates, every year, a number of communities in the state participate in a rate study, or a rate survey, if you will. Neglars also has participated in it, and these communities picked basically the ones that were anywhere from 1,200 population to around 3,800, and they're within probably anywhere from two to three to four counties from here, from Greene County. And they're just listed alphabetically, and the annual surcharge is based on 55,000 gallons. That's how the survey calculated it, so it's a little bit different from what a previous table. But the rates range from almost $300 per month to almost $900, and then Neglars, at that volume, a typical residential user would be at about $907 per year, excuse me.
This is Peggy Cruz. What would, what would the sewer charges be that would not be proposed? What would actual be right now? Would we...
If you go back to the previous table... You're looking at about, at 50,000 gallons, which is, you're looking at about $644 per month, or, excuse me, per year.
Now, this increase of $907, is this the result of the upgrade, the combination, or is it based totally, I guess, I don't even know if I'm phrasing this right, is it a combination of usage, waste, and the upgrade that we're doing, or is it based totally on the fact that we're going to be improving our facility?
Actually, other than some of those O&amp;M costs that I talked about earlier, this does not include any upgrades to the treatment plant. This is just strictly to, I mean, you haven't raised your rates in 12 years, so...
Right.
That's kind of the impact.
Reason.
This is a result of that. This is just basically to collect enough revenue to keep the utility solvent.
It does seem though that we're going to be going quite a bit higher than everybody else. I mean, I get that we haven't raised our rates in 12 years, but how did they keep theirs down? I mean, that's just, we're going to be significantly higher than the majority.
Well, my question is, and Tammy, you, and maybe Drake can answer this, we probably did not do a rate case, but we, did we do, I can't recall, incremental increases, or do we do absolutely nothing over 12 years?
There have been no, there have been no increases since 2008. And it's possible, Tammy, that we are doing, we've done more projects than the other utilities as you do street projects, and you replace infrastructure, or if there were any improvements done to the plant over the last 12 years that we hadn't recouped costs for yet, there's a number of things that would go into what rates are, but it's largely project-driven. So if improvements aren't being made in the utility plants, or the utility infrastructure that's in the ground, then there's no need to raise rates significantly. But I don't know the full story over the last 12 years, but I know the, you know, Third Avenue was a significant project, and there were probably other projects over the last 12 years that were completed, requiring wastewater funds.
So our higher rate compared to our neighbors is because we're recovering funds that we didn't collect over the last 12 years? Is that kind of what you're trying to say?
It's a combination that the cost to operate the plant has increased over the last 12 years, and that there are projects that we funded that increased debt payments that we didn't raise funds to, that were not meeting adequately. So the costs that the utility is facing are starting to catch up to the revenue that it's generating, and the revenue it's generating, according to the rate case that Strand completed, is not sufficient to maintain a healthy financial picture for the utility without a rate increase.
Gansher, Mike here. I have a, not necessarily a question, but I guess I do have a question. I'm looking at some of these other communities or municipalities that are much lower, but as I look, Brooklyn and Orfordville Utility are pretty much in line with what our proposed increase is. My question is, is it possible that maybe some of these other communities are in the same situation as we have been for the last 12 years?
I know Brooklyn, they just recently went through an upgrade, or are going through an upgrade at their treatment plant, so that's probably reflected in their $825. I mean, a lot of these communities are going to be, if they haven't been already, in the same boat in terms of meeting the stricter phosphorus requirements. And I can't tell you where they're all at in terms of their permit. And you're, the village is fairly far along. I mean, within roughly three or four years, you'll have to have upgrades constructed and The communities are probably all over the map in terms of where they're at in their overall schedule, but I'm sure some of them have had to reach that milestone. So Drake's right. I mean, it all depends in large part on the number of projects they've had at the treatment plant, or in their collection system that's reflected in these rates.
So then the next question would be, how long do you think we'll be able to sustain this rate? I mean, if we went 12 years without raising it last time, is this increase projected to take us out a few years before we would have to propose another increase?
Yeah, well, the plant upgrades are going to drive that, essentially. You know, within two to three years, you'd probably be looking at another rate increase.
Should I ask if there's anybody from the public? I think from here on, we'll see if there's anybody from the public that wants to ask any questions. If not, then we'll close the public hearing, and then anybody that has any questions can ask them when we get down to the public work, public safety item on the agenda. So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak, or ask any questions? Okay, hearing none. I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Mike Ganzer, I would so move.
Michael Bell, second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everybody else say aye? I didn't pick some out of them. Okay. Okay, we'll go into the regular meeting then. I'll call the meeting to orders. Lynn, would you please do the roll call?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Michael Bell?
Present.
Mike Ganzer?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz?
Yes.
Tammy Newberry?
Present.
Chuck Phillipson?
Here.
Roger Trutman?
Here.
Lori Wertz?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a forum. We are in session. I look for an approval of the agenda.
Gansher, Mike, I would so move for the approval of agenda.
Michael Bell, I'll second.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item three, public appearances and citizens' comments. No debate will occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff committee if action is required. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Gansher, Mike here. I just have a question with regards to item F, and that is successor agent Anthony Hawks for Casey General. Is there an issue there with the previous agent?
Mike, that is the case. They just changed employees, so the person who was the agent under that liquor license is no longer employed by Casey's, is my understanding, so they had to appoint a new person.
Yep, that's fine, and that's what I suspected, but I wanted to clarify if you mentioned it.
Yep.
So I would move for the approval of consent to agendas, item A through...
We already got that, Mike.
Sorry, then, I would second.
Got that, too.
We got that, too, already. Okay. Thank you. Mike has a blink. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item five, public work, public safety. Discussion consideration ordinance of 20-05 to amend chapter 244 of the sewer utility section 244-2 BD, user charges. You still with us, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, does anyone have any questions of Kevin or Drake on this issue?
Gansher, Mike here. I would move for the ordinance 20-05 to amend the chapter 244 for the sewer utility.
All right, Michael Bell will second that.
I think we should do a roll call on this. Sure. Lynn, would you please do a roll call on this for us, please?
Sure.
Mike Bell? Michael Bell?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yep. Mike Ganzer?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz?
Yes.
Tammy Newberry?
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson?
Yes.
Roger Trutman?
Yeah.
Lori Wertz?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Item B, discussion consideration resolution 20-13, update fee schedule for septic and holding tank fees.
These are the fees that were discussed in the presentation. They're just set in the fee schedule rather than by ordinance.
Ray, I'll make a motion that we set those.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Item B, discussion consideration resolution 20-13, update fee schedule for septic and holding tank fees.
These are the fees that were discussed in the presentation. They're just set in the fee schedule rather than by ordinance.
Ray, I'll make a motion that we set those.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I would second. Ganser, Mike.
Okay. Lynn, I, I guess I'm going to ask you to roll, roll call this one again, please.
Okay, sure. Michael Bell. Mike Ganzer.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz.
Yes.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Chuck Phillipsen.
Yes.
Roger Trutman.
Yes.
And Lori Wertz.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, motion carries. We don't need Kevin anymore, do we? Thank you very much, Kevin, for attending our meeting this evening and answering all our questions and everything.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye, Kevin.
Bye.
Okay, I, I don't see discussion consideration. Police Department remodel construction loan authorizing Bank of Newglares as the lender.
Staff contacted three local banks to request a proposal for a 10-year, $563,000 construction loan to fund the police department remodel. Bank of Newglares submitted the best proposal with an interest rate of 2.096% fixed for 10 years or 1.877% fixed for the first two years, followed by 2.229% fixed for the remaining eight years. There is no prepayment penalty. Staff is recommending approval of the loan at the rate of 1.877% for the first two years and 2.229% for the remaining eight. This is because the village will likely do a larger borrow within the next two years to fund another project. And then the village would roll the remainder of this loan into a future bond sale.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and accept Newglares' bank's bid.
Lori Wertz will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Uh, new business, discussion consideration resolution 2015, moving the polling location for November 3rd election.
Uh, the Newglares Fire District has agreed for the use of the fire department for holding the November 3rd election, which we are very appreciative of. Pursuant to state law, the village board must formally set this location and approval of this resolution would accomplish that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, go ahead, Mike.
No, you go ahead, Tammy. That's fine.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and accept the offer from the Newglares Fire Department to hold the election at that location.
Ganser, Mike, I would second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There is no president's report, so I guess, is there any further business? Hearing none, we are adjourned.